Commissioner's Court, Brazos County will meet reg session on May the 20th, 2025, 10:00 AM in the Commissioner's courtroom, County Administration Building, 200 South State Avenue, Suite 106. First item is the infocation pledge of the US Texas flag. Commissioner Brown will lead this.
I thought we could all use a little something from Galatians today. Galatians 5, verse 22. "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, long-suffering, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control." Lord, I pray that we will walk in the Spirit. I pray that you will give us peace, you'll give us understanding, that you will give us wisdom as we deal with the issues that come before this court today. All of this, I ask, Lord, in your precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Second item, only agenda is to call citizens' input and our concerns, and I think we've got something to speak. David Taylor.
My name is David Taylor. My address is 5036 Angel Lane, and I am opposed to the East Loop. I really don't like speaking in public, it makes me nervous, but this is too important of an issue to stand back and not fight. So I would like to talk about courage. It takes courage to work your whole life, spend your life savings, building a ranch, farm, winery, or just a little getaway from the city. Nobody moves out of town and says, "Wouldn't it be great if the city came to me?" What would be courageous is if the Commissioner's Court put the Inner East Loop project on the agenda instead of relying on the results of the 2022 trip bond. Judge Peters said voters were misinformed on Prop B, and I suspect they were misinformed on Prop A, so doesn't this deserve further discussion? Supposedly, all registered voters received not only one, but two PAC-generated flyers about the trip bond. I'm not sure if I got mine, but even if I did, the alignment on the mailers isn't even close to the current alignment. So there's a little problem with transparency. You say you must hold up to the voters on the trip bond. Well, they voted for the alignment shown on those mailers, which shows it going right through Merrimont Golf Course. So it seems that's what was advertised. So I'd like to hold the Commissioner's feet to the fire because that's what they said they were going to do, and it's not what they're doing. Judge Peters said he doesn't know why voters vote the way they do. I have a guess. It's probably because the voters were very misinformed, the Inner East Loop was not discussed in the media, and the Commissioners did not spread the word and educate the voters. I would like to commend Commissioner Fred Brown for having the courage to suggest we add the Inner East Loop to the agenda. I want to thank everyone for their time and allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Teresa Sebeck-Holland. My family owns a 300-acre property just southeast of Merka Road. We've been taxpayers, business owners, and landowners for generations. We care deeply about its future, and we want to be a part of its success. That's why I drove from San Antonio to be here today. Recently, we were blindsided by news that a 300-foot-wide highway is being proposed that will cut right through the middle of our land. No one contacted us about this, not the county, not the city. We'd never heard of the inner loop. We only found out when quiddity engineers called last month to give us what they called a heads-up. They said the road would give us better access and that it might not be built for years. But here's what they didn't say clearly. They want to preserve this nine acres of corridor through the middle of our land without any compensation unless it gets built someday. In the meantime, we can't develop it. No plan, no guarantee, just wait. Let me be clear, this land is valuable, not just to us, but to the county. Two years ago, we worked in good faith with the city of Bryan. We granted a utility easement so the city could extend service to Stella Ranch. In return, we got the capacity to serve our own track. We were working together. We thought we were working together to increase development. It now seems counterintuitive to use prime housing development property for a highway. The truth is, the proposed alignment would actually blot two of our key access points. That means the land would no longer support a residential development, eliminating the 750 homes planned for construction to begin in the next five years. Let's talk numbers. If the highway takes 20 years to build, that's at least 17 years of lost property tax. On our land alone, that's $73 million to $78 million conservatively in lost tax revenue. Now considered the 700 acres to the east of us, also long owned by families like mine. Do the math, and you're looking at over $200 million in lost tax revenue over 17 years, waiting for a project that may not be necessary and may never happen. I want to say this clearly, stopping this study now is not a failure. Oh, that is my phone. Stopping this study now is not a failure. It's not a waste. That's a sunk cost fallacy. If the study costs $10 million, it was $10 million spent learning something important that maybe this road isn't the right answer. And that's okay, because that's exactly what these feasibility studies are for. Instead of preserving a corridor that damages generational landowners and delays real growth, let's redirect those funds towards what the voters thought they were getting: better roads, better intersections, and safer infrastructure. We trusted the process. We acted in good faith. This isn't the kind of treatment we expected from our county officials. We're ready to be partners in growth, but this plan as it stands isn't growth, it's lost opportunity. I am respectfully asking for the Commissioners to pause this process so that we can have a real public discussion. Thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you. Rita Harris.
I also have...
If you have something to hand out, just hand it up there. Rita Harris.
My name is Rita Harris. I live at 5844 E. Sterling Drive, Bryan, Texas. I've actually lived here for five and a half years. I moved here because of the values, the kindness, and the small-town feel. Even the city itself touts a slogan, "Bryan, a great place to live." As a citizen of this area, I'm starting to believe that is not true anymore. As a constituent, lately I have been felt lied to, taken advantage of, misled, misrepresented, and straight-up ignored by my elected officials. Look at yourselves. I'm not even sure that if you didn't have to legally give me the time, you wouldn't be listening to me. If you hear nothing else, I believe that the East Loop has been completely misleading, unwarranted, widely not desired by your constituents. As a small town, I expected this to be a place where voices were heard, people were cared about, and quality of life mattered. But when it comes right down to it, this East Loop project shows the sheer amount of greed we have running rampant in our city and county. My backyard lines up to a proposed route. You have intentionally devalued my property, devalued my vote, and failed to consider what mattered to people in this town. As a public servant, I expected you to care. As an observer of this Commissioner's Court, I doubt you will. I stand firmly against the East Loop and am passionately willing to speak out against it. I have been misled. This loop has nothing to do with relieving traffic on Highway 6. If traffic was your concern, you would be working on the advertised items in which people thought they were voting for: Welburne University, William J. Fitch, the widening of Highway 6. I am a native Houstonian. My childhood home in Bel Air is between Loop 610 and Beltway 8. The city I grew up in has been devastated by flooding, abandoned strip centers, shuttered businesses, homeless encampments, graffiti, boarded-up buildings, failing infrastructure, and crime. That's what happens when loops are built. Everything moves to the newest location. The houses are cheaper, the commercial rent is lower. But what happened to the area left behind? It decays. Should we expect more vacant strip centers and restaurants along Highway 6? We certainly see them on Texas Avenue and Harvey Road. In the 20 years my husband and I raised a family in Cypress, we witnessed the exact same thing. We don't need more concrete, more traffic, and more pollution. Every time it rains there, the streets flood, the houses flood. Developers really thought, "If we cover all this open farmland with concrete, build a little retention pond, it will prevent flooding." But guess what? The pumps fail, the infrastructure rust, that beautiful neighborhood man-made lake is now in my house. Cypress is full of crime, decaying apartments, low-income houses, and abandoned businesses. This is the effect of urban sprawl. I don't want to see that happen in Bryan College Station. Please focus on the things that need to be fixed before creating new problems. I am begging you, do not destroy the east side of Brazos County. We only have so much land. Why destroy what little we have? By continuing this project, my neighborhood will be completely devastated. We would all be much better off if the route went directly through our home. I'm sure all the other neighborhoods that are impacted by this feel the same way. I don't think Brazos County officials want to become Harris County. We are better than that. Aggies don't lie, cheat, or steal, or tolerate those who do. You have the power to stop this. Do the right of the people who elected you. The East Loop is not inevitable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa O'Bannon. Melissa O'Bannon.
Hi, my name is Melissa O'Bannon, and I live off of 1179, and I am opposed to the East Loop. I feel like the traffic is generally using 1179, and a loop would not be helpful when we can use those resources to expand on other roads that we have projected and planned. I also own a local real estate company, and I know that buyers are going to be really affected, and properties that are selling their homes will be really affected by having a loop in their backyard or close nearby. I don't think that's going to go over very well. This will destroy the development of thousands of acres that are near Merrimont, and so therefore, I am opposed to the loop, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. David Sessom.
My name is David Sessom, 5998 Hair Lane in Bryan, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I oppose the inner East Loop in its entirety and the cancellation of the contract. I've submitted a letter to the court for consideration about extending the comment period for 90 days, also considering allowing the discussion to be on the public agenda, and also consider pausing quiddity's contract for 90 days for multiple reasons, and we'll discuss those. The first question I have is kind of aware of the numbers. Several demographic studies showed no to moderate growth in the area. When you review Bryan ISD's strategic planning or bond steering committees, they show moderate growth or decrease in enrollment through 2034 through 35 for elementary schools, moderate to minimal projected growth for middle and intermediate schools, moderate to minimal projected growth for high schools, with the majority of the projected growth for Bryan High School, whose attendance zone does not include the Inner East Loop area. In the BCS area, there's a decline in birth rates, there's also existing subdivisions that lose about 100-plus students per year. Studies conducted by the population and survey analysts that's located in College Station that Bryan ISD used for those, so it's not really an argument about, "Well, this was a Houston firm, this is a local entity that Bryan has used for many years for their demographic studies." And also, if you look at the last demographic study for College Station ISD, they actually reported a 2% overall growth in their last study, so it doesn't really reflect the numbers for growth in the area. So another question is, where's the county getting their data with the projected growth, and why is it not available to the public? If the survey is underway, why are comments like "Without proper transportation, our congestion will continue to increase" being shared by communication consultants with the project, and yet no data is available for fact-checking? I am not in the proposed alignment, yet I still oppose it based on my experiences with Brazos County ordinance enforcement. Concerns about how the county will handle the proposed growth, when the livestock and animal abuse and environmental issues and repeated noise violations, gunshots, and excessively loud music are not addressed. My vehicle is sprayed with aerobic septic system discharge from an occupant on my road. They modified their aerobic system, and complaints have been filed but yet to be addressed. So if we can't handle what we have, how are we going to handle new growth? Comments have also been made about how Brazos County can't afford this road project, but hopefully Tech Dot will pick it up after the survey. I'm concerned about this as well. Enforcement is an issue in Brazos County, but how will crime be prevented with these new corridors open in the east for criminals to have easier access to the previously rural area? How will that be funded and enforced better than what is occurring now? How will Tech Dot afford this project? They have paused many of their projects due to being over budget as it is, banking on an agency to fund a project that has fiscal concerns just doesn't make sense. Another concern is what's happened in Robertson County with Union Pacific taking land by eminent domain and then canceling the rail yard project. Based on previous interaction with this court and review of previously recorded court meetings, the burden of proof is being placed on citizens to show why this project is needed. In an interesting dissent by Texas Supreme Court Justice Jimmy Blacklock, who is now Chief Justice, reviews of KMS and Rowlett and their public land takings for the benefit of private parties, the dissent stated that the Texas Supreme Court would welcome the opportunity to explore the question of taking land for the benefit of private parties in future cases. With the lack of evidence showing growth and need for Inner East Loop, perhaps the Texas Supreme Court could possibly have their chance for this exploration. With a lack of transparency for Brazos County officials and the repeated attempts to have this matter discussed in an open forum on record, it creates doubt for all parties involved, particularly when alignments have moved off of particular developments in the path. I do appreciate Commissioner Brown requesting the Inner East Loop being added to the agenda on a workshop, and I wish that the Commissioner, from my precinct, would do the same. In articles related to the Inner East Loop and other county business, the following statements hide in my awareness that follow these projects tend to speak before this court. An article quoting a county official that football game traffic mirrored that of big city justifies the need for improved infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Bonnerigo.
I wish to share two examples of county actions that show the lack of concern for a major county employer and the residents of Brazos County. My name is Paul Bonnerigo. My wife and I are co-founders of Messina Hoff Winery. Messina Hoff provides more than $20 million in economic benefit to Brazos County and draws more than 200,000 Messina Hoff tourists to Brazos County each year. We are currently threatened by this inner loop that is not needed. The current location of the inner loop borders on a 50-acre track, which Messina Hoff was going to use to expand our historical vineyard and winery. The recent actions of the county concerns this inner loop project have not been transparent and do not act in the best interest of all the individuals of Brazos County. and do not act in the best interest of all the individuals of Brazos County. In 2023, the Old Reliance Road project was budgeted for $4.5 million. It was intended to expand the roadway and improve drainage. The project was to take nine months. Instead, the project took one and a half years, significantly exceeding the budget and achieved far less than what was initially projected. This road project is an example of the county's inability to manage a road project. The Old Reliance project nearly bankrupted Messinahoff. It reduced traffic to the winery by 50%, needlessly, and cost the winery $500,000 in lost revenue. I notified my county precinct to commissioner, and essentially, he did nothing to minimize the negative impact of the road. The county posted road-close signage even when the road was open. In 2021, my second exposure with the county is I raised a very important issue in the southern part of Brazos County, which impacts our newly-elected commissioner Bentley Nettles, for whom I have the greatest respect. I brought before the county a dangerous situation, which was hazardous, and carcinogenic agricultural chemicals are being sprayed in the Brazos bottom. These chemicals are dicamba and 24D. Fifty-four counties in the state of Texas have already significantly restricted the use of these chemicals, so you would think, in a county that has the largest agricultural institution in the United States, would lead in protecting its citizens. I requested that the county significantly restrict the use of these chemicals. The commissioners rejected any restriction on a three-to-two block vote on the use of dicamba and 24D, stating that these farms were a long way from real estate developments. Well, now we see that these developments are moving closer and closer to these farms in the Brazos Valley. It is well-documented that all these chemicals can drift for miles, especially if the temperatures exceed 90 degrees and the wind is blowing more than 10 miles an hour. I ask you today to hear the voices of those who elected you in order to avoid these mistakes. Extend the period of commitment to allow transparency and allow all residents of Brazos County to share their voice to their commissioners. Put the item on the county commissioner's agenda. Investigate the contract with quiddity, reconciling the validity and need of the East Loop project when we already know the expansion of lanes on Highway 6 East bypass is to begin this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa White. Teresa White.
My name is Teresa White, and I live at 2299 Reed Lane, the dead end of Reed Lane, the main crossing for this East Loop. I wanted to go a different route today, with no pun intended. How many of you have someone in your family over 80 years old plus? I'm sure that's all of us, right? Would you like to see them finish out their last days being happy, with no care in the world, watching the sunrise and set, having the wildlife come and tell them good morning, whether it's a bird, or a squirrel, or even a deer? But wait, someone has an idea. We need to be more like Dallas, or Houston, or Katy. Let's plan on constructing an outer loop around the city. This could be a plan for the future. I can see a four- to six-lane highway with sidewalks on both sides, maybe a few retail shops, and show the public what a countryside setting is like. Don't you think if the public wanted to have a countryside setting, they would be in the country? But if we do that, do you realize Aunt Jane and her handicapped daughter will lose their homes? You know, when her disabled Vietnam veteran husband knew that when he passed, she and her daughter would be taken care of. This is how she is being taken care of. Two houses, ant carports, and possibly a barn will need to be moved. Added to this list is two times: septic system, water line moved, electric pole and house hookup, propane tanks relocated and hooked up to the house, plus being displaced for a few months. Who will replace the fence line on both sides of the highway because the property is partial on one side and then on the other? So you're looking at two sides of a fence. The way I feel is, when you're looking at the map, they left us a little piece of the pie over here so we can enjoy it. Now, do we get to choose which flavor of pie we're having? No. No one knows what is involved in our land since it is only seen on Google Maps, and Google Maps are not complete. Reading how the concerned parties have met with property owners impacted by alignments and working closely with them, no, no contact by anyone. Everyone involved should be contacted in person. So why does this expensive study without contacting property owners and actually seeing the land itself? Oh, right, somebody wants to honor the rich character and agricultural aspect that benefits the community. Benefit the community? I thought this was to benefit travel from north to south and vice versa. That is what everyone in the line of destructive lives for: to honor the rich character and agricultural aspect. Okay, our property should not benefit anyone else but our families.
Thank you. Sharon Pittman. Sharon Pittman.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Sharon Pittman, and my family owns 382 acres just east of Merrimont on FM 1179. This property has been in my family for over 150 years, and it holds many special memories for my family. I grew up riding my horse on that property. I learned to drive in those pastures. I took my first steps on the front porch of the farmhouse. Our dream for our land was to create something really special by developing a beautiful master-planned community. My two uncles, my sister, my cousin, and myself have started that process several years ago, and have spent thousands of dollars for market studies, bubble drawings for our master-planned community. We have had numerous meetings with the city of Bryan and with Tech Dot over the past two years about our development, and surprisingly, the individual meeting on March 31st of 2025 was the first time that we ever heard anything about the inner East Loop and the effect that it could have on our property. We have never received any mail or postcards about it, and we were unaware that the proposition voted on in 2022 involved the inner East Loop. Our plan is to develop our acreage into approximately 800 homes, adding significantly to the tax base and adding that tax base much sooner than anything that may come from the inner East Loop. It was devastating to us to learn of the study area that involved our property. The proposed alignment goes directly through the most developable part of our property, leaving us with pipelines, oil pads, and ponds. We adamantly oppose the inner East Loop, and we feel that it is not necessary. We also feel that it will not be utilized, as people are not likely to go out of their way to avoid Highway 6. We do not want commercial frontage on a highway. Our plan is for a residential development, and the inner East Loop will not be beneficial to us. This property is one of the few large acreage tracts left, and it is inside the city limits. And I ask that you protect it from the adverse effects of the proposed inner East Loop and cancel the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill LeRoe.
Distinguished commissioners, thank you for this time. I'm here today to talk about the East Loop. You can imagine, Bill LeRoe, fourth generation, Brian. I've spent my whole career developing, building, real estate deals in the county. I only say that to tell you that I'm familiar with the county. I apologize for being short and the lack of the pleasantries here, but we only have four minutes, so I've got to get going. I'm currently developing, as you probably are familiar with, a rural subdivision out in the Harvey area. The first rendition came out in November. Had no idea this was coming. There were four routes drawn across it. You know what it did to that subdivision, just devastated it, stopped it. I went to quiddity, they didn't even know the subdivision existed. So I moved on. I said, this is going to take a long time. I moved on to another area, started looking at what I thought was a safe area, and that would be in Bryan. Bryan's spending, as these ladies have pointed out so eloquently today, Bryan is spending millions of dollars in an area for sewer, for infrastructure, for city services. Thought we were safe there. The new map came out, a line drawn right through the area we're looking at. The next morning, literally, the financing folks call and say, stop that. You know, we're not going to look at this any further with you. We've got to figure out what's going on here. So I started realizing, we've got a problem here. There's these disconnects. And so what I did, I went to the source document that I see that you use, that's being used here, and I looked down on the bottom, and this thing was done in 2017, which means that there was probably a year or two buildup to ever produce the map. So we're working off of old data, 10-year-old data, to develop this current route, this current study that we're doing. It's not ITS's fault, it's not quiddity's fault. I'm not here to blame folks. Somehow, we've just gotten behind the curve here using old data and need to do a little better, I think, looking further out. You know, both cities, very familiar with those, I think the cities are required mandated, they do an updated comprehensive plan every five years. They do that, they've done that. I'm talking about, they've gone through two comprehensive plan cycles that we've been, since this has been done. So I just think we have a lot of old data here. We've not been able to do the best job that we can for our constituencies. The other thing that I think I've noticed, just watching, and I may be wrong, I apologize, but I'm not seeing any other constituency here. If this project is where it needs to be, and you want somebody, it needs to be here right now, why aren't there another advocacy group here? Either entities, I don't know if there's any entities here representing this thing, advocating to you for it, or any other citizen constituency here advocating for it? All I've continued to see is opposition for this project. The other thing that I started realizing, this is not an East Loop. This is a north-south-East Loop. You know, when you look at the map, and you see where it starts, right here at 6 and Fitch is where this project really starts. You're going to, as you see in every town, when you get off onto this loop, there will be the big sign saying, "All truck traffic must exit here." They will immediately start down Fitch by the new city College Stations midtown, by Pebble Creek, by fire stations, and the people on Fitch will be as impacted as much as the people in Steep Hollow. So I just think that, you know, we've got some information here that maybe we need to back up and take another look at this thing. I'd just like to say one thing, Judge. I'm standing here looking at the flag, the Texas flag. Makes me, Texans, when we see the flag and we think about it, this is not what they meant at the Battle of Gonzales when they said, "Come and take it."
Thank you, Bill. Okay. That was the last speaker. So we will move on to number three, presentation and discussion. Presentation by Chad Caperton, Brazos County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources, and Stephen Brugengriff.
Judge, I think we're missing a speaker. Derek Ratliff.
I beg your pardon?
Derek Ratliff.
Did I miss one?
Yes, sir. I think we're missing a one.
Well.
Number six.
Yeah, well, I see it, Derek. I guess I got it flipped over too fast.
That's all right, we're good. Okay, so my name is Derek Ratliff. I live at 523 Wallace Lane, or Wallace Road. I'm here today speaking opposition to the East Loop. I'm a fifth-generation cattle rancher. I'm a multi-generation Texan. I can actually trace my roots back to one of the few survivors at Goliad, who was actually granted some property not far from where I now live. I'm a father of two boys, a five- and a 12-year-old, and a founder of Horizon Firearms, who are a three-time Aggie 100 company. You can see my building from here, it's Casper Outdoors, and I think, Judge, you know that your son-in-law actually works for me. So we moved to Bryan because we want to be part of a small rural community, kind of like how I grew up. And I can stand here today and tell you that no one outside of developers wants this road, that the proposed route isn't going even down property lines, it's splitting up ranchland for development, that the number of local people that I run into that have no idea this is coming is shocking, that the short window for quiddity's comments is unreasonable. Or I can tell you how, as a landowner, how I was called into a meeting in the bottom of the garage where I got to sit and watch a young quiddity girl tell me how it must be terrible to see a four-lane highway go through property, having no idea what that actually meant. But instead, I want to tell you what it feels like for my family. So, you know, I get a lot of people asking how I'm explaining this to my boys and how we're handling this, and it's like a terminal illness. That's about the best way that I can describe it. You don't have a timeline, you don't know whether you can beat it or even address it, you don't know where it came from, you spend all your time looking for advice from doctors and lawyers, but yet you have no control, and it controls you. It messes with your family, your relationships, your dynamics, your quality of life. And so I'm trying to explain to my sons that the land that they run on, that we ride horses on, that we have our church group on, may not be there for them, and it may not be there for their children. It's really hard, because I come from a fifth-generation company, my wife comes from a fifth-generation company, where it's really not about yourself, it's about the next generation, and it's about being stewards of God's given resources. And so now, I get to spend time in front of my, instead of with my family, with my boys, talking to lawyers and consultants, texting the former governor of Texas, who's a family friend of ours, trying to protect our land, and it's hard ultimately to know that I'm trying to convince them that it's all going to be okay when I'm not sure myself if it is. You have the power to protect families like mine, that's what you were elected for, and I just ask that you reconsider the East Loop project, prioritize the funding towards expanding and improving the existing roadways, but it's not just about politics, it's about legacy. And so what I ask you is, what kind of legacy do you guys want to leave on this community? Because right now, it feels like the classic Aggie syndrome, we just want to be like the people in Austin.
Okay, thank you. I think that must have been the last one. I'm sorry I missed that one. Okay, so we'll move on to number three, presentation and discussion. Presentation by Chad Caperton, Brazos County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources, and Stephen Brugengriff, Brazos County Extension Agent for Horticulture, and Commissioner Wanda J. Watson on successfully completing the VG Young Commissioners Court Leadership Academy, Part One.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Good.
So, we have to adapt and overcome, so we have adjusted our participants this morning. I am Chad Caperton, the county administrator for Brazos County, but I have a great team that we work with, so it's my pleasure to introduce formerly Ms. Flora Williams. She has completed her PhD, so she is now Dr. Williams. So she's going to present this.
Howdy, to our Honorable Judge Peters, to our commissioners, and to our community members. For more than 50 years, the VG Young Institute of County Government has served local governments in Texas. Since 2005, the institute, a part of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, has offered the Commissioners Court Leadership Academy to further enhance the professionalism, to broaden the knowledge, and to enrich the experience of county judges and commissioners in Texas. The Leadership Academy involves four sessions over a two-year period. The Leadership Academy involves four sessions over a two-year period. So, that's three, three-day sessions in Texas counties, and one seven-day session in Washington, DC. Presentations, workshops, discussions, and networking opportunities during the sessions guide participants through a complex leadership topics. Topics are carefully selected and developed to be timely and relevant to the county judges and commissioners. So, on behalf of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the Brazos County Extension Office, and we congratulate Commissioner Wanda Watson on successfully completing Commissioners Court Leadership Academy Session One. We have a certificate of completion.
And we will move on to the next presentation by Dr. Crystal Thomas and Dean, Dr. Dean McCorkle of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension with results of the FY 2024 Economic Impact Report for Brazos County Expo position complex.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Jacqueline Foster, General Manager of Brazos County Expo and Brazos Valley Fair and Rodeo. Today's presentation provides the results of the 12th Annual Economic Impact Study for Brazos County Expo Center Complex. It covers fiscal year 2024, October 1, '23 to September 30, 2024. The impact of the expo complex has grown significantly over the years, with the exception of 2020 with COVID. For fiscal year 24, we hosted 162 events, spanning over 511 event days. Not to take away from the presentation, but there are a few key notes that I would like to highlight. The total economic impact of the expo for FY 24 is a little over 66 million, which is 39.5% higher than fiscal year 23. The study also shows that the expo supports an estimated 536 jobs across the local economy. With that, I would like to acknowledge and thank the entire Expo and Fair team, it's their hard work and dedication that keeps events and guests returning to the expo and spending in Brazos County. This morning, Dr. Thomas and Dr. McCorkle are here to present the details of the economic impact finding for FY 24. Dr. Crystal Thomas is an Assistant Professor and Extension Specialist, Dr. Dean McCorkle is a Senior Extension Program Specialist, Economic Accountability. Both are with the Department of Agriculture, Economics, and Texas A&amp;M and Texas AgriLife Extension. Following their presentation, they'll answer any questions of the court, and then move to the atrium for any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacqueline, and good morning, thanks for having us. I'm gonna go through, because I think for some of us in here, it's the first time we've ever seen the impact report on the Brazos County Expo Complex. I'm gonna run through and kinda give a little bit of background, and then Crystal's gonna run through a little more of the detail of the impact study we did. There's actually a long history that the Expo Complex has of working with AgriLife Extension and the Ag economics Department at Texas A&amp;M. That long history was with Dr. Rebecca Dudense, a coworker of Crystal and I. Rebecca has moved on to a different position, so we've transitioned to Crystal and I, this is the first report, first time we've done this report, being for fiscal year 2024. And just like all the reports that Rebecca does, what the report focuses on primarily is visitor impact, impacts of spendings, any reasons for changes that we can pick up on from year to year. We try to do an annual comparative analysis, and then also to take into account any updates affecting the center's operation. Briefly here, we've got a little schematic diagram of what we're calling a community economic system, and I hope this kinda helps explain before we get off into some of the details of how we measure economic impact. We've got what we call a basic industry up there at the top, that's primarily gonna be an industry that's manufacturing some sort of physical product, where they're selling the product outside the region, so they're bringing in new dollars into the region, the region in this case being Brazos County. And then down on the bottom right, you see services, which is where the expo complex would fall into. So, as a services industry, what are they doing? They're employing people from the other circle there that's labeled as households, also paying them wages as well. The expo complex also, there's a lot of events and programs hosted there that are really aimed at local people in Brazos County, but also, like, much like the basic industry, the expo complex does a lot of events that's bringing in people from outside the county, bringing in new money into the area, and that's primarily what we're mostly interested in, in conducting this kind of impact analysis. So, B C E C, I'm probably the only person that uses that, that's my little acronym for the Brazos County Expo Complex. It generates a lot of economic activity in Brazos County. So, how do we go about measuring this? We gotta have data to do this, and thanks to the efforts of the Expo Complex staff, they survey a lot of people every year based on random events that are held at the Expo Complex, asking questions about what they're spending money on, did they stay in a hotel or not, which hotel did they stay in, et cetera, which provides a lot of rich data for us to use in trying to measure this. And this past fiscal year, they had responses from over 2,400 people. Next thing I want to talk about is a little bit more on measuring the economic impact of this. One thing we're very interested in, which I mentioned earlier, I think, is local people attending events versus non-local visitors, and the same with expenditures. Expenditure to those people that live here in the county, we don't include in what we're doing, because everything we're focused on here are those visitors from outside the county that are coming here, which Crystal's gonna talk about here shortly. So, the spending by local people, you know, while it doesn't bring new money into the county, it does keep people, keep money from leaking outside of the county. And leakages are a big thing when we're doing this kind of analysis. Well, that's one of the benefits of having local people attend events, reduces leakages, but it's not bringing new money in. And Crystal, I think, here we go, I'll let you take over.
All right, so as Dean mentioned, we are focusing more on the non-local visitors, because we are trying to figure out what new money is actually coming into the county. And so, to continue on that, we basically collected a 2,400-plus survey from the Brazos County Expo Complex. From that information that we collected, what we do is, we kinda clean the data. So, cleaning the data implies that we want to ensure that those who were actually surveyed were from outside of the county. And so, we did receive some surveys that did have individuals with zip codes indicating that they lived in Brazos County, as well as those that may not have had zip codes for Brazos County, but they implied that they were in Brazos County for 365 days. So, those type of datas were eliminated, in addition to anything that looked like an outlier, so for example, someone indicating that they were spending $5,000 on a hotel for one person for one day. So, that ensured that we didn't have information that skewed the analysis that we produced today, or are we presenting today. And so, as a result of the 2,400 initial surveys, we ended up with 2,250, which is still a significant amount in order for us to do the analysis. And so, this table more or less provides a summary of all of the activities held by the Brazos County Expo Center for fiscal year 2024. As Jacqueline mentioned earlier, they had 164 events, two of which were the fair that took place within the fiscal year. When we look at the information, we see that a lot of the events held by the Brazos County Expo Center focuses around horse shows, livestock shows, banquet and fundraisers. We also see a lot of the persons that attend those events are attending as a result of horse shows and livestock shows. We see about 25,000 or 20-plus thousand persons coming in for those events. In addition to the person days, which is, we have the number of persons at the event times the number of days they spent while visiting Brazos County. So, we see the horse shows are about 80-plus thousand-person days from those attendees. We're looking now at the average non-local expenditure, and so this more or less provides years from 2022 to 2024. Now, the reason why we're including three years here is more or less to remove any discrepancies that we may find in 2024. So, it gives us an idea of which events tend to bring in the most money to Brazos County, right? And so, when we look at this data for the three past years, or fiscal years, we do see that a lot of the expenditure from our non-local visitors come from the rodeo and roping events, and so that tends to bring in a lot more income per person, per day, to the Brazos County. And then, of course, the dog shows, which there was one, if you look back at the first table in the report, there were one dog show, however, that one dog show brought about 76,000-person days, or 8,500 persons, indicating that each person tended to stay around nine days in Brazos County. Looking specifically at 2024, we do see here that, we look at the total expenditure for each of those events. As mentioned, the dog show, even though there were one in fiscal year 2024, we do see that there were a lot of persons coming in, and they stayed a lot of days, and so that resulted in the expenditure for dog shows being the largest category analyzed for the fiscal year 2024, at about $13.2 million. And then, rodeo and events and horse shows also contributed significantly to the expenditure within the Brazos County. As mentioned, one of the major category that visitors tend to spend on when visiting the county would be hotels. A bulk of the spending came from there, and so when we look at this chart, more or less what we see is that there were higher person days in fiscal year 2024 compared to fiscal year 2023. And most of that increase occurred in the dog show, which we see almost twice that of fiscal year 2023, being 9.2 days versus about 3-point-something days in 2023. The average hotel stay in fiscal year 2024 was 3.8 days, and that was up 1.3 days compared to 2023. So, what we're seeing here, what the data is showing us, is that the persons who are coming in, the visitors to Brazos County, they are spending more time in the county compared to previous years. And so, we'll see the results when we look at the impact assessment, it's much higher, as Jacqueline mentioned, about 40% higher compared to fiscal year 2023, and that is as a result of persons spending more time in the area. Perhaps there's more activities to be done, and they're obviously spending more money as well. So, what we did this year, which was different from previous reports conducted by our team at Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, we looked at the pre-COVID-19 and a post-COVID-19 analysis, and what we observed is that prior to COVID-19, of course, we looked at that year 2020 by itself, and then the pre-COVID would be from 2017 to 2019, and the post-COVID analysis would be from 2021 to 2024. So, what we see as a result of analyzing pre and post-COVID, was that, of course, in 2020, we see a significant reduction in the number of events held by the Brazos County Expo Center. They had 136 events compared to 194 in 2019, on average, 183 during the period 2017 and 2019. But this number actually grew in 2021 to 207, there was a lot more private events that was held in that year, and then we also had 2022, we had 198 events in total. We do see a decline from those numbers in 2023 and 2024, and I'll try to explain why that decline might be the case going forward, because we had lower private events held by the Brazos County Expo Center. But those private events tend to be like weddings and graduation events, which of course are more local persons within the county actually booking the Expo Center for their events. So, the impact that we would have would not necessarily be affected, because we're looking at local visitors versus non-local visitors. And so, these charts more or less just show, we did a trend analysis, just to see what was the impact of COVID-19 on the attendance for the events at Brazos County Expo Center, or even the events that are booked with the Brazos County Expo Center. And so, what we observed was that there was generally an increasing trend when it comes to the total number of events that are being held, as well as there's a general upward trend in relation to the number of attendees. So, COVID didn't have a significant impact in terms of the number of attendees, there was still somewhat of an upward trend. So, we look at the economic impact analysis, and so, in this case, we're looking at those non-local visitors. We utilize a software called Implan, and so Implan looks at an input-output model, and it quantifies different type of multiplier effects that may occur in the economy. So, for example, you're spending $1 in a supermarket or store, that has a ripple effect in the economy, because that $1 can be translated into $3, right? Because now you're purchasing, different persons get a job as a result of our expenditure, and so we're creating additional income, we're creating additional spending. And so, we're using those multiplier's effect to be able to tell us what the economic impact is of non-local persons visiting the Brazos County. So, when we're doing economic impact assessments, there are three different types of effects that we like to look at. The direct effect generally is within the industry. So, here we're looking at Brazos County Expo Center, and so we're trying to figure out what is the contribution of Brazos County Expo Center directly to the Brazos County area. And then, we have the indirect effects, which are other industries that might be affected as a result of the events that are held by the Brazos County Expo Center, and the induced effect would be those individuals who are employed as a result of the events held at the Brazos County Expo Center, those persons who are employed, receive an income, and then they spend, right? So, that additionally creates an economic impact to our economy. So, as I mentioned before, there are different types of multiplier effects, and so there are four listed here. We have that economic output effect, which is basically that total value of goods and services that are produced within the county. And then, we have employment, those persons who are gainfully employed as a result of the events that took place at the Brazos County Expo Center. Of course, if you're employed, you have that labor income that generates payroll costs for wage and salaries of the employees, payments to themselves if they are self-employed. And then, we have a value added, which is that additional thing that comes as a result of subtracting those intermediate cost or input costs. So, once we run the analysis utilizing Implan, of course, our region here is Brazos County, so we're trying to figure out what is the impact on the county as a result of those non-local visitors visiting four different events held at the Brazos County Expo Center. And so, what we found was that the direct effect, which is as a result of those events, were like $44.6 million, and we do see, which is the bulk of the $66.2 million that we see, which is 40% higher than that of 2023. So, we do see a significant effect or impact of the Brazos County Expo Center to the community or to the county. And thank you. And of course, you can provide or find more information that we do at Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension through the Agricultural Economics Department, through our Community and Economic Development webpage, as well as we do articles on Southern Act Today, that provides a lot of insights in terms of agriculture and different things that pertains to our clients and customers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate y'all coming in and sharing with us. I mean, we have done this for a long time, and it shows what the impact and what the expo means to Brazos County. And I mean, when it was built, that's part of the role of the expo was to be to bring other folks into the county so that they'll spend their money here and make an economic impact on the county. And it has been successful. And I remember during COVID that while most places were shutting down because you couldn't be around anybody, outside events, like horse events and those kinds of things, were allowed. And so it's those kinds of things we continued on with here at the expo because we were able to, and so it was a benefit to having, you know, the expo out there. It's been a great event center and continues to be. Thank y'all for the presentation. Anybody else have any comments?
I'd like to have comments. So as a citizen, Wanda, I recognize, I sort of took advantage, I mean, I was aware you guys were there, but now as commissioner, it has afforded me the opportunity to actually engage differently because then I get sort of behind the scenes, and I want to thank you all for what you do. I have, it has educated me because I wasn't necessary to come, and I thought expo, I thought agriculture. I grew up in West Texas, but I didn't ride a horse, or I didn't know anything, I knew about cows and so forth. But it has now afforded me the opportunity to sort of be behind the scenes and see what it is that you all do. So I want to thank you personally for everything that you do. It is great that it has a positive impact on the county, so I wish you all continued success. And Jack, thank you so much for affording me that opportunity. So again, thank you all very much, continued success, and let's see where it goes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will move on, consider to take action on Agenda Items 4 through 17. Number four is approved approximation 25-025, claiming May 20, 2025 as Brazos Valley Beekeepers' Day. Move for approval?
Second.
Second. I think we've got a group here, young folks, and not sure who all is here, but they need to come up.
Oh, wow. That is awesome.
They're just buzzing around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're continuing, yeah, continuing the...
So let me read the proclamation. Whereas the United States has proclaimed May 20 as World Bee Day, a day to acknowledge the vital role of bees and other pollinators on our ecosystem, and whereas bees play a crucial role in maintaining biodiversity, pollinating crops, contributing to the global food security, and whereas our local community, like communities worldwide, benefit from the vital work of these pollinators, and whereas Brazos Valley Beekeepers Association members have dedicated to serving our community since its formation in 2015, sharing their knowledge, passion, and expertise to promote the sustainable beekeeping practices through monthly club meetings, a yearly bee school, and youth beekeeping and scholarship program, and whereas on the occasion of the 10th anniversary, we recognize and commend the dedication and hard work and the invaluable contribution of the Brazos Valley Beekeepers Association in reaching the lives of our residents and enhancing the environment. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Brazos County, do hereby proclaim May 20, 2025 as Brazos Valley Beekeepers' Day in Brazos County to encourage all citizens to celebrate and support the ongoing efforts of this outstanding program.
Jason Borba, I'm president of the Bee Club and also youth director. As you can see, beekeeping is not a, it's not a single-person task, multiple generations and future scholarship recipients. Okay, that guy's coming around. We appreciate you, Commissioners, for recognizing the importance of honeybees in our environment, for recognizing the importance of educating our youth and the importance of what we do for this community. Thank you.
Yeah, we do. Anybody else want to speak? Yeah, come on, come on, y'all line up up here. Thank you, guys.
Hold that. And we'll...
Want to tighten it up? Make it something that's shorter in front.
Everybody say "B".
I don't think we voted on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five, I think we're going to need to table that. I'll read it, but approval of first amendment, third reinstatement of Brazos Valley Wide Area Communication Systems Interlocal Agreement, ILA, and the approval of first amendment of the BV Wax. So I need a motion to table.
So moved.
Second. Motion made seconded to table in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is permission to advertise RFP 25-122 pre-audit for Brazos County Adult Juvenile Detention Centers.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is permission to advertise RFP CIP 25-581 Dillashaw Tap Road Reconstruction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Looking forward to seeing that come through.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of the following committee for RFP CIP 25-581 Dillashaw Tap Road Reconstruction.
Move for approval, A through F.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of contract CIP 25-600 HU Humidity Control for Detention Center with hunting services in the amount of $470,006.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion.
Judge, I'd just like to know what that leaves us in our general fund contingency account? If somebody can tell us.
I don't know that she can come up with off the top of her head, but if anybody can, she can. Nina?
I can't prepare.
Oh, that's good.
So there's two budget amendments that we'll be using contingency, so I'm going to give you the bottom line if both budget amendments go through.
That's if both of them go through.
That's if both of them go through.
Okay.
Sound good? You're welcome.
Great.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is consider to take action on City of Brian Utility Permit to install 12-inch sewer line within the right-of-way of Foster Road, Leonard Road, and Silver Hill Road. This West Side Sewer Interceptor Improvement Project will also include road bores under Leonard Road and Bush Lane. Sites are located in Precinct 4.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12 is tax refund application for following...
Move for approval, A through C.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is budget amendments, FY 24-25 budget amendments, 31.01 through 31.06.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 14 is personnel change status.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8209692 through claim number 8209842, and claim number 9204416 through claim number 9204486.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. We'll skip down to number 18 is an acknowledgement of Brazos County Health District's Independent Auditor Report, Annual Financial Report for the year ended September 30, 2024. Number 19 is acknowledgement of FY 2024-25 Budget Tax with By-Fund as of May the 14th, 2025. Number 20 is an acknowledgement of the FY 2024-25 Contingency Budget Tax with By-Fund as of May 14th, 2025.
That's number 19, Judge.
Was that 19, or was that continuation of 19? Okay.
Continuation of 19.
Wait, it was stapled, I couldn't read it. Okay, so number 20 then is juvenile directors' budget, juvenile directors' report on detention population, and I think they said Linda wasn't here, so let me see if I have a report. I am not.
Got those numbers, Judge?
You got the numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So there are eight, there are 34 juveniles in the center, 18 are male, 16 are female, and 32 have electronic monitors. Number 21 is sure as report on inmate population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our jail population this morning is 718, that is 630 males, 88 females, and we have 53 on electronic monitor.
Okay. Thank you. Number 22, number 22 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, if I might?
Sure.
I intended to address the court at the beginning of public comments, but I had to step outside. But, and this is not because of anybody's comments today or any activity that occurred today, but I did want to address a problem we have where people say they weren't aware of our courtroom decorum rules and our, as regards this open meeting. And the second paragraph, if you look on your agenda of the public comments section, says, "It is not the intention of the Brazos County Commissioners Court to provide a public forum for the demeaning of any individual or group, neither is the intention of the court to allow member or members of the public to insult the honesty and/or integrity of the court as a body or any member or members of the court or county employees individually or collectively." I'm going to skip the next section because that's never applied to this court, as I'm aware of. But there are consequences to violating those rules, and those are listed right below that paragraph, including losing your time, potentially not being allowed to speak again, or even more serious consequences. And it was definitely not anything anybody said today, so I intended to give this before, and I'm doing it now so that in the future, we won't have people say that they weren't aware that that was against the rules. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Yeah, Judge, I would just ask people to recognize, you know, this weekend is next Monday's Memorial Day, and this weekend, a lot of people have fun, a lot of things to do, but take time to think about the meaning of that day. It used to be Decorations Day, but it's to recognize fallen service members. When I was in Afghanistan, on my field table, I had a Rudyard Kipling poem that I kept to remind me of the challenges that we had. And so if you'll extend your patience, I'd like to read a Kipling poem from 1985 called "The Veterans." "Today across our fathers' graves, the astonished years reveal the remnant of that desperate host which cleansed our east with steel. Hail and farewell, we greet you here with tears that none will scorn, oh keepers of the house of old, o'er ever we are born. One service more we dare to ask, pray for us, heroes pray, that when fate lays on us our task, we do not shame that day." So take time on Monday to honor those who gave their lives in this oversaw country. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other announcement or interest item?
Just a reminder, the firm doing the study for a possible route through East Loop Brazos County is accepting comments and route. You can vote on the proposed routes, look at the routes, learn more about the study. You can comment on the study through the 23rd. It's available through the county website. You can go to the county website, scroll to the bottom, it's right there, and it'll take you where you need to go to comment, or look at routes, or vote on a route, or anything that you want to do with the study. Comment period for the second series of comments is through the 23rd.
Okay. Thank you, Christian. Anybody else? Hearing none, we will go back up to number 16 and convene an executive session. We've got several. We'll start out with A and B is kind of a combination of Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with an attorney about pending contemplative litigation and our settlement offer, and B, Government Code 551.7.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated, and I believe we need to vote on that one particular one. Is that correct, Counsel?
Yes, sir, and I have submitted a letter, as I always do, that meeting in open court would diminish your abilities to negotiate with a third party, and that letter has been filed with the court for all of the contract items listed on the executive sessions this morning.
So I need a motion and a second to approve that, and then we'll need a unanimous vote to have it happen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, so that will be A and B, and for that one, we'll need Bruce, Allison, Ed, and Charles, and of course, the court, Aubrey. I think that was all we needed in there. We might need somebody, but I think that was all. Then we'll move on to C, which is Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated, and this is Contract B. So we're going to have to, I believe, take action on that one also.
Yes, sir.
So we want to do that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you've already...
Yes, I've submitted a letter for all of the contract items.
Okay, all right. So I need a motion and a second for this one.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, passes. So then, and that will need Julie, Charles, Nina, Katie, Char... Yeah, Julie, Charles, Nina, and Katie. So I need a motion and a second to approve that, and then we'll need a unanimous vote to have it happen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, so that will be A and B. And for that one, we'll need Bruce, Allison, Ed, and Charles, and of course the court, Aubrey. I think that was all we needed in there. We might need somebody, but I think that was all. Then we move on to C, which is Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated. And this is contract B. So we're gonna have to, I believe, take action on that one also.
Yes sir.
Do we want to do that now?
Yes sir.
Okay, so you've already...
Yes, I've submitted a letter for all of the contract items.
Okay, all right. So I need a motion and a second for this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, passes. So then, and that will need Julie, Charles, Nina, Katie, Char, yeah, Julie, Charles, Nina, and Katie, of course the court, and Aubrey. I think that was all we would need. Was there anybody else in that one that was needed? I think that's all I had down. Then E is Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, assignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of county personnel. And with that one, we need Trevor, Charles, HR, Nina, of course the court, and Aubrey. And counsel. Is anybody else?
No sir.
I think...
Yeah.
I think that's...
The clerk notified me that we didn't take the election on D.
You gotta speak up Bruce, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
We didn't vote on D.
Okay, we didn't vote on D.
No sir.
Okay, so we'll go back to then E. All in favor, raise your...
D or E?
D, we did not vote on D.
Okay, D. All right. We'll do that. All in favor, raise your right hand.
No, we need a motion and a second.
A motion and...
Motion to approve, item D for executive session.
Second, a motion.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, there is none, it's unanimous. So now we, you think we've got everything straight?
Yes sir.
And I think we've got who we need in each executive session. So we'll start out with A and B, and it'll be Bruce, Allison, Ed, and Charles, and then the court and Aubrey. And I think that's all we need in there for that one. And the time is 11:22.
Okay, we're coming out of executive session. It's 11:59. We are going to recess until 1:30 and then we'll go back into, come back into open session and then go into executive session again.
So it's 1:30?
1:30.